The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by His Excellency, the Most Reverend Barry C. Nesthouse, Bishop of the Catholic Diocese of Richmond, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led from the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
The Book of Ecclesiastes says, "There is an appointed time for everything and a time for every affair under the heavens." Beyond those occasions and ecclesiastes, we add other times and occasions as we pray today, as you begin this floor session. Lord God, Maker and Sustainer of the heavens and earth, we ask your grace and assistance to make this day a time of prayer for civic leaders, legislators, for law enforcement officers, for the military, for peoples in the midst of or under the threat of war or violence, or for our adversaries as well. Help us to make this day a time of fasting for victims of abuse and for families, for an end to violence, for justice, peace, and the protection of innocent human life at all its stages. Help us to make this day a time for teaching, to better learn from one another and to seek the truth in heart and mind. Help us make this day a time for civility, to be respectful in what we say and how we say it, and to listen attentively with open minds to what others say. Help us to make this day a time for dialogue with people of every faith or system of belief, Christians, Jews, Muslims, Hindus, Buddhists, other faith communities, and all men and women of goodwill. Help us make this day a time for witness, to live our values with mutual respect, human dignity, compassion for one another, and security without resorting to discrimination. Help us make this day a time for service, to continue to provide assistance to those injured, hurting, or in need throughout the Commonwealth. Help us make this day a time for solidarity with all who live under the threat of violence and uncertainty each day. Help us make this day a time for hope in God's grace and in one another. Help us make this day a time to pray, to teach, engage in dialogue, and urge one another and all the leaders in our community and of our Commonwealth to work together for peace and to overcome injustice. I ask this prayer through Christ the Lord, who lives and reigns with you, Almighty Father, and the Holy Spirit, one God, for ever and ever. Amen.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. The clerk will close the roll.
Madam Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Tuesday, January 28, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to the provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the First Morning Hour Order of Business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First Morning Hour Order of Business. The Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons.
The delegate from Petersburg, Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Ayer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, visiting here with us today in the Capitol is President Abdullah and students from Virginia State University for VSU Day. And if they are in the gallery, I'd ask that they please stand. Madam Speaker, I am a proud graduate of a historically black college and university. My alma mater, Virginia State University, was founded in 1882 by a bill before this very body by Delegate Alfred Harris from Dinwiddie. Virginia State's founding purpose was originally so that Americans could receive instruction and be molded into award-winning and effective educators throughout the Commonwealth. Historically, black colleges and universities have always been economic engines that drive prosperity for their home communities. Students, faculty, staff, and supporters strive to not make only their HBCU but their surrounding communities better than they were when they came. And although HBCUs are traditionally for African-American students, so many more benefit from their existence. Delegate Alfred Harris dreamed of a place where all may go and drink from the Fountain of Knowledge until their ambition is satiated. With the help of the General Assembly, Virginia State University will continue to enrich the lives of students and our Commonwealth as a whole. I am so proud from this floor to proclaim hail state. At this time, I ask that you all join me in giving the students, President Abdullah, on behalf of myself and Delegate Cox, a warm House welcome.
Welcome, President Abdullah, and all the wonderful students from VSU. It was great to meet with you earlier and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Supramin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In the gallery today, we have with us members of the Virginia Wing of the Civil Air Patrol from Loudoun County and across Virginia. With more than 2,000 volunteers, the Virginia Wing of the Civil Air Patrol members serve in 25 squadrons across the Commonwealth. Civil Air Patrol volunteers responded to eight search and rescue missions in Virginia last year alone and resulted in eight fines. They flew over 2,000 hours in support of the Commonwealth last year alone. I also learned today that members of this General Assembly are actually automatically inducted as honorary members of the Virginia Wing of the Civil Air Patrol. So congratulations to everyone. And I hope it will be a pleasure of this body to give them a warm House welcome.
Wonderful to see you all from the Civil Air Patrol. Thank you so much for being here. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Fredericksburg, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Joining us in the House Gallery today, we have representatives from the Fredericksburg area Boys and Girls Club of the Rappahannock Region. And I would just ask that they would stand and be recognized this morning. They provide much-needed services to our students in the city of Fredericksburg, and we're grateful to have them this morning.
Welcome to the Boys and Girls Club from Rappahannock Region and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Thanks for joining us.
Madam Speaker.
Yes.
I have another introduction. I apologize.
No problem. Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Also joining us in the gallery, we have members from Powerhouse, Virginia. And they represent counties as far as Caroline, Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, Stafford County. And they help women protect them and help them out with any domestic abuse relations. And we're really glad to have them and all they stand for today. So I would ask the House to give them also another warm House welcome.
Welcome to the advocates from Powerhouse. Thanks for being with us today and for what you do in your advocacy. Delegate from Lynchburg, Delegate Walker.
Morning, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Walker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Joining us in the gallery today is Dr. Kenneth Garan. Dr. Garan is in his 19th and final year as President of the University of Lynchburg and in his 58th year in professional service. He's worked for NASA on the Apollo project and co-authored Manual Control of High Altitude Apollo Launch Abort. This was signed by Buzz Aldrin, an astronaut. Beginning his military service in high school, he retired as a Colonel in the United States Army, receiving a maturous service award at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. Dr. Garan earned his undergraduate degree from Roanoke College, his master's degree from William &amp; Mary, and his doctorate degree from Virginia Tech, all in mathematics. He has served on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Independent Colleges and Universities and represents, along with two other regional presidents, in lobbying efforts on behalf in Washington, D.C. in support of independent higher education for all private colleges and universities in Virginia in the southeast portion of our country. We thank Dr. Garan for his service to the University of Lynchburg, the Commonwealth, and our nation as he prepares to entire his well-deserved retirement. Please join me and Delegate Charles Poindexter, who is also a graduate of the University of Lynchburg. And let's extend a warm welcome to Dr. Ken Garan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Dr. Garan. Hope you enjoy your day here. Congratulations on your retirement. And thank you for your service to our country and the state and the University of Lynchburg as well. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of introduction.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker and members of the Assembly, I just want to introduce today that should be, and I guess they are in the gallery, if they are, I'm going to ask them to stand. And that is the Virginia Alliance of the Boys and Girls Club, which works to enable all young people, especially those who need us the most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. The Virginia Alliance also works to promote positive youth development across the Commonwealth and work in partnership with other youth-serving agencies. You might be familiar with some of their flagship programs, including Project Learn, Money Matters, and Passport to Manhood. Virginia Boys and Girls Club serves more than 62,333 youth within 96 club sites in 51 cities. Today, we are joined again, once again, by the Boys and Girls Club from across the Commonwealth, including my district. I ask that they receive a warm welcome from the House of Delegates. Thank you.
It's great to see the Virginia Alliance and the Boys and Girls Club. And thank you so much for what you do, working with our youth, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Ayala.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction. And good morning.
Good morning. Delegate Ayala, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. I am pleased to recognize members of the supporters of the Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Action Alliance in the gallery today. Sexual and domestic violence advocates from throughout the Commonwealth are here to speak to their representatives about what they need to strengthen our responses to survivors as well as the need to build our capacity to prevent violence before it happens. Prevention staff and these local agencies coordinate a variety of evidence-informed, public health strategies aimed at changing behavior, supporting health norms, reducing the likelihood that sexual and domestic violence, perpetration, or victimization will ever occur in communities. Now, more than ever, it is crucial that we hear from and partner with these advocates as they work to build a robust and effective sexual and domestic violence prevention infrastructure. I thank them for joining us today and ask that the body join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
It's great to see all of you from the Alliance and thank you for your work on behalf of such a vulnerable population for working to prevent sexual and domestic violence. And thank you for advocating on behalf of the bills here today. The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today's invocation was offered by His Excellency, the Most Reverend Barry C. Nesthouse. And I would ask that he please rise. The Most Reverend Barry C. Nesthouse is the 13th Bishop of the Diocese of Richmond, appointed by Pope Francis on December 5, 2017. He was installed on January 12, 2018 at the Cathedral of Sacred Heart in Richmond. Growing up in Bowie, Maryland, Bishop Nesthouse attended both Catholic and public schools and graduated from Bowie High School in 1980. After entering the University of Maryland, he was accepted into the School of Architecture and earned a bachelor's degree in 1984. The following year, he began seminary studies at Mount St. Mary's Seminary and received a Master of Divinity and a Master of Arts in Moral Theology. He was ordained a priest for the Archdiocese of Washington on June 24, 1989 by Cardinal James A. Hickey. For five years, Father Nesthouse serves as a parochial vicar at two parishes in the Archdiocese. In 1994, he was named the Priest-Secretary to Cardinal Hickey and continued to serve in that capacity until his eminence is death in 2004. For the next two years, he was assigned as pastor of St. John Evangelist Parish in Silver Spring, Maryland. And in 1999, he was made Chaplain to His Holiness, Pope John Paul II, with the title of Monsignor. In October 2006, then-Monsignor Nesthouse was named Secretary for Pastoral Ministry and Social Concerns and was appointed Moderator of the Curia and Vicar for Administration in April 2007. In both roles, Monsignor Nesthouse helped the management and oversight of the Archdiocesan Administration. Pope Benedict XVI appointed him Auxiliary Bishop for the Archdiocese of Washington and the Titular Bishop of Leavenworth on November 18, 2008. And he was ordained a bishop on December 29, 2008, during the Octave of Christmas. Bishop Nesthouse's Episcopal motto is "Christ Our Hope." While shepherding the Diocese of Richmond, Bishop Nesthouse serves as a Region's Fourth Representative on the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops Committee for the Protection of Children and Young People, which, in coordination with the National Review Board, provides recommendations concerning child and youth protection. He is the Episcopal Moderator of the Association of Catholic Correctional Ministries and serves as the Episcopal Liaison to the Diocesian Fiscal Management Conference. And he is a fourth-degree member of the Knights of Columbus. As a practicing Catholic, it is my honor to ask the House to give Bishop Nesthouse a warm House welcome today.
Thank you, His Excellency, the Most Reverend Barry Nesthouse. Thank you for honoring us with your presence and for your invocation this morning. The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today in the gallery, we have some guests from my district and from localities across the peninsula. Joining us are members of the Virginia Peninsula Association of Realtors. If they are here, I ask that they stand. Perhaps they have not made their way into the gallery. But the Peninsula Association of Realtors is one of the most active and influential professional organizations in our region. They support homeownership and the real estate profession in Hampton, Newport News, Pecoson, Allen, White County, and York County. Their 1,200-plus members are highly respected for their adherence to a strict code of ethics and for their hundreds of volunteer hours given each year to their communities. But where they play the most important role is in advocating for fair housing, land use and zoning, landlord and tenant laws, private property rights, quality of life improvements, transit and transportation, and flood mitigation. This year, the association is celebrating its founding 100 years ago that occurred in part of the central restaurant that's in my district, along with delegates Battin, Brewer, Hodges, Mugler, Mullin, Price, and Simons. Would you please join me in welcoming them to the House and extending now congratulations to them on their 100th anniversary?
Welcome to the Virginia Peninsula Association of Realtors. Congratulations on your 100th year and hope they're enjoying their day in Richmond, wherever they are, in Capitol Square. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Adams, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today in the gallery, I believe, are students from the Environmental Science and Public Policy classes at St. Christopher's and St. Catherine's School. I'm not sure if they're here. But St. Christopher's and St. Catherine's Schools are college preparatory schools in my district in Richmond. St. Catherine's is an all-girls' school. St. Christopher's is an all-boys' school. They are shining examples of academic excellence. And in particular, what is special about these schools is they offer what's called junior kindergarten. So these students start between four and five years of age prior to kindergarten. And they offer academics through 12th grade. And so I would hope that it will be the pleasure of the body to offer the students of St. Christopher's and St. Catherine's School a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the students in St. Christopher's and St. Catherine's. Hope you're enjoying your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Frederick, Delegate Collins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a request for unanimous consent.
Delegate Collins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the body, my locality, the city of Winchester, had a voter referendum in November where the voters have chosen an elected school board over an appointed school board. Their charter now needs to be amended to reflect that. And they were able to get this done yesterday at their town council meeting, despite requests to do it earlier. So I would ask that the body give unanimous consent for me to place a bill to allow for amendment of the charter, to allow for an elected school board rather than an appointed school board, and thus follow the democracy, the voters' choices in the city of Winchester. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate requests unanimous consent. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Unanimous consent is granted. The delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For over 40 years, DePaul Community Resources has opened doors to hope and belonging for families and individuals across Central and Southwest Virginia. With more than 200 staff and network, over 400 care providers, foster and adoptive parents, and a host of volunteers, advocates, and partners, they work each day to change the world by improving the lives of children, families, and individuals with developmental disabilities throughout our communities. We have three of them visiting with us from Lynchburg. They're either in the gallery. There they are. I hope you will extend a warm House welcome to them. Thank you.
It's wonderful to see you. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of such a vulnerable population. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for two introductions.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, today, I believe, in the gallery, we are joined by Children's Home Society. And if they're here, would they please rise? Ladies and gentlemen, and Madam Speaker, Children's Home Society is a nonprofit which focuses their efforts on finding permanent adoptive families for children and youth in foster care. In addition, I believe they brought some of their partners from the Better Housing Coalition with them. And together, those two have created the Possibilities Project, which helps youth who have aged out of foster care successfully transition into adulthood. And tomorrow, on January 30, the Children's Home Society will be celebrating 120 years in operation. And so I would ask that we get the House, give Children's Home Society a warm House reception.
Welcome to the Children's Home Society and congratulations on your 120 years.
Madam Speaker, today we are also joined in the gallery by members of the VCU Student Government Association. And if they're here, I'd ask them to rise. Well, they might be somewhere on Capitol Square. But I had the opportunity to meet with them today. These are the elected student representatives voluntarily advocating for their student body. They serve as liaisons for the student body to the faculty administrators. Today, they met with several of us. And I, on behalf of all the Richmond delegation, certainly want to thank them for their service. And I'd ask that the House give them a warm House welcome.
It's great to see the VCU Student Government. Thanks for joining us today. Hope it's a productive afternoon for you. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, joining us in the gallery, maybe in the gallery, maybe somewhere on campus, maybe in House Room 3 in the Oval Room, wherever you are, if the 60 or so members of the Northern Virginia Association of Realtors would please rise so that even if you're not here in the gallery, the people in the room know how important you are. Go on, get up. We've got about two busloads of members of the Northern Virginia Association of Realtors come down to have their lobby day here in Richmond, along with their Policy Committee Chair Sheila Jackson. These individuals are representing the 13,000 members of the Northern Virginia Realtor Association. Realtors are an important part of our communities, helping people buy, sell, rent, and, most importantly, settle on homes. This is one of the most important decisions a person has to make. And these professionals are there to make the process easier and help facilitate what can be a very daunting process. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to give the Realtors a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the 60 members of the Northern Virginia Association of Realtors. I'm sure you are very busy out there on Capitol Square and enjoy the day. Look forward to visiting with you later. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a request and two introductions.
Delegate Carr, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to take Commending Resolution HJ 167 out of order.
The clerk will report the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 167, Commending the Richmond Academy of Medicine.
Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the adoption of the resolution.
All those in favor of the adoption of the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, the resolution is adopted. Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, joining us in the gallery are physicians and staff of the Richmond Academy of Medicine. I ask them to please stand. This year, the Richmond Academy is celebrating its 200th anniversary. Founded in 1820, the Richmond Academy was formed to provide education and support for central Virginia physicians. Over the years, it has remained an integral part of Virginia's medical community as the patient's advocate, the physician's ally, and the community's partner. The Richmond Academy has been nationally recognized for its programs to support young physicians. Many of the House members will be familiar with White Coats on Call days at the General Assembly and the Legislative Advocacy. They provide on behalf of patients and the practice of medicine during each session. I'd ask the House to give the Richmond Academy of Medicine a warm House welcome and thank them for their 200 years of service to our Commonwealth.
Welcome to the Richmond Academy of Medicine. Thank you for joining us, but thank you, more importantly, for what you do every day. And congratulations on your 200th anniversary. Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For another introduction, today is Real Life's Fourth Annual Reentry and Recovery Advocacy Day at the General Assembly. They are joined by partner organizations such as the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences, True Recovery, and the War Foundation. I'd ask all the Real Life advocates I'd ask all the Real Life advocates and their partner organizations to please stand. Each of these organizations work with individuals exiting incarceration or battling substance use disorder and provide comprehensive services, which includes recovery housing. While these issues are so prevalent today, each of these organizations are providing a critical service that aims to provide opportunities for a new way of life of those they serve while enhancing our community and its residences. Collectively, they represent thousands of lives saved and many families reunited. We appreciate their presence today to raise awareness of their organizations and those they serve. I ask all the members to give them a warm house welcome.
Thank you to those from Real Life. Thank you for being here today and for sharing your personal stories and advocating. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested calendar to regular calendar. There is one move today. Page 15, House Bill 238, will be moved to the regular calendar.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of requests by members for legislation to go by for the day, if any, and the subsequent motion by the majority leader. By for the day will be on page 21, House Bill 630, by for the day. Page 22, House Bill 789, by for the day. Page 35, House Joint Resolution 148, by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the previously announced legislation go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the legislation as just announced by the clerk go by for the day. As many as favor the motion shall say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth morning hour order of business. The next order of business is recognition of members' requests for points of personal privilege, and please use your request-to-speak buttons.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Helmer.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Helmer, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I've heard recently some critics of the common sense gun legislation before this body say that Democrats are seeking to pass these bills because we don't understand these weapons and are afraid of them. I'd offer that the contrary is quite true. I've qualified on everything from an M9 pistol to a Mark 19 automatic grenade launcher. I've carried firearms in Iraq and Afghanistan. I am myself a gun owner, and I enjoy taking my boys skeet shooting. But I've seen the -- I know of the damage wrought on the bodies of my friends by bullets, and I don't want to see that damage inflicted on our children. It's because I fought terrorism all over the globe that I want to make sure law enforcement here at home has the ability to deny terrorists access to guns. It's because 20 veterans a day take their lives, most of them with firearms, that I want to make sure that families have access to help in a moment of crisis. It's because I've consoled a mother afraid to send her young daughter to school for the first time. It's because I've consoled a constituent whose friend and neighbor just a few days before had committed suicide with a gun. It's because I've seen the tattoo on the arm of a constituent of a best friend killed with a billet. It's because I've heard from the survivor of a school shooting in my district. It's because I've heard from gun owners in my district tired of their kids being afraid to go to school. And it's because I've heard from those kids that they're tired of being afraid and tired of adults who won't take any action to stop it. I've had the privilege of serving in Iraq and Afghanistan side by side with women and men with the courage to stand up and fight to keep our country, our Commonwealth and our communities, safe. And I hope that the members of this body will find the courage to pass these common sense laws that will keep our Commonwealth safe. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recess into 1:05 PM.
All those in favor of recessing to 1:05? All those opposed, stand and recess till 1:05. The Republican Caucus will meet.
The Republican Caucus will meet immediately in House Room 2. Democratic Caucus will sit in their seats.[938.13]
The House will come to order. The clerk will call the calendar.
Calendar for the Virginia House of Delegates, January 29th. House bills on third reading, uncontested calendar. Page one, House Bill 155. Page two, House Bills 211, 313, 404. Page three, House Bills 411, 445, 446. Page four, House Bill 510, 544, 548. Page five, House Bill 593, 595, 722. Page six, House Bill 813, 989, page...989, 1011. Page seven, House Bill 1100, 1126, 1337. Page eight, House Bill 1339, 1527, 1528. That completes the bills in the block.
Shall the bills pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstention zero. The bills pass.
House bills on third reading, regular calendar. Page nine, House Bill 62. A bill to amend and reenact Section 58.1, 3825.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to transient occupancy tax, Arlington County.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 76, nays 22, abstentions zero.
Ayes 76, nays 22, abstention zero. The bill passes.
Page nine, House Bill 1530. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 2099 and 2106 of the Code of Virginia relating to no-fault divorces, corroboration requirement.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstentions zero.
Ayes 58, nays 40, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 119. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 3.2, 5120, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to milk, definition misbranding.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 66, nays 32, abstentions zero.
Ayes 66, nays 32, abstention zero. The bill passes.
Page 10, House Bill 1357. A bill to amend and reenact Section 29.1, 553 of the Code of Virginia relating to sale of wildlife mounts.
Shall the...shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 74, nays 25, abstentions zero.
Ayes 74, nays 25, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 37. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 4.12 and 4.1314 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control. Still's or distilling apparatuses, permit required.
Shall the bill pass? Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 88, nays 10, abstentions zero.
Ayes 88, nays 10, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 90. A bill to amend and reenact Section 46.2, 1052 of the Code of Virginia relating to window tinting, vehicles used in the course of business by private investigators and bail bondsmen.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 43, nays 53, abstentions zero.
Ayes 43, nays 53, abstention zero. The bill fails.
House Bill 183. A bill to amend and reenact Section 42.170 of the Code of Virginia relating to libraries, assessment for costs in civil actions, dispersment for law libraries.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 64, nays 35, abstentions zero.
Ayes 64, nays 35, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 465. A bill to amend and reenact Section 46.21315 of the Code of Virginia relating to local regulation of certain transportation companies with an emergency clause.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 93, nays 5, abstentions zero.
Ayes 93, nays 5, extension zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 511. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2, 614.5, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal Sections 10.1, 104.01, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to electric vehicle charging stations, operation by state agencies.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 66, nays 31, abstentions zero.
Ayes 66, nays 31, abstention zero. The bill passes.
Page 12, House Bill 543. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2100 and 46.2908.1 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 46.2904.1 relating to electric power-assisted bicycles.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 86, nays 10, abstentions zero.
Ayes 86, nays 10, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 598. A bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1210 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, annual mixed beverage performing arts facility license.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 90, nays 6, abstentions zero.
Ayes 90, nays 6, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1066. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2842 and 46.2842.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to signals overtaking vehicle.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 89, nays 8, abstentions zero.
Ayes 89, nays 8, abstention zero. The bill passes.
Page 13, House Bill 1088. A bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1212 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, walking tour permit.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 91, nays 7, abstentions zero.
Ayes 91, nays 7, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1142. A bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1309 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, possession and sale of alcoholic beverages at school sporting events, penalty.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 65, nays 33, abstentions zero.
Ayes 65, nays 33, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1187. A bill to amend and reenact Section 4.1119, as it is currently effective and as it shall become effective, of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, distiller licenses, Internet orders, and shipments.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 81, nays 17, abstentions zero.
Ayes 81, nays 17, abstention zero.
Page 14, House Bill 1259. A bill to amend and reenact Section 46.2122.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to regulation or prohibition of parking of certain vehicles in certain counties and towns.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 15, abstentions zero.
Ayes 82, nays 15, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bill 1252. A bill to amend and reenact Section 40.1121 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 40.1120.1 related to prohibited discrimination in apprenticeship programs.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 85, nays 13, abstentions zero.
Ayes 85, nays 13, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House bills on second reading, uncontested calendar. Page 14, House Bill 88. A bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2947.9 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 24.2947.10 relating to elections, campaign finance, filing schedule for persons with multiple campaign committees, reported from privileges and elections.
Delegate from Manassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this bill closes a loophole whereby certain candidates who had multiple active campaign committees would have previously been able to conceal the source of campaign donations by taking that donation to one campaign and then transferring that money to their other campaign, and it would not, under current law, be disclosed until after the date of the primary. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third
Page 15, House Bill 106. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22024 of the Code of Virginia relating to numbering on buildings, civil penalties, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Spansylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 106 corrects ambiguity in the code currently, according to some county attorneys. If a locality has an ordinance that says you have to have your home numbered, that if failure to do so is a criminal penalty, this would simply make it a civil penalty instead of a criminal penalty. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 146. A bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2622 of the Code of Virginia relating to sample ballots, color of paper of unofficial sample ballots.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Could this bill go by for the day, since I think Delegate Lindsey's away, I'm pressing personal business?
House. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? HB 146 will go by for the day.
Page 15, House Bill 238, has been moved to the regular calendar. Page 16, House Bill 239. A bill to amend and reenact Sections 24.2701 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, deadline for applying for an absentee ballot to cast other than in person, reported from privileges and elections.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House of Delegates. This bill moves back the deadline a couple of days to apply for an absentee ballot by mail. The reason for the bill is that U.S. Postal Service, their services declined over the years, and we want to make sure everyone gets a ballot in the mail so that they apply. The deadline was moved back a couple of days, and that's all the bill does. I hope and urge that the body will engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 240. A bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2703.1, as it is currently effective and as it shall become effective, of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, annual applications for eligible absentee voters, reported from privileges and election.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, this little bill also allows a person, just for one year, the extent of the year, to apply for an absentee ballot for every election in that year. And it's not a permanent absentee ballot request, but just for one year. So, for instance, a presidential primary, a May town election, a June primary, and the general election on November, you would have to apply for an absentee ballot only one time for that year. And that's what the bill does. So I hope the body will engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 369. A bill to amend and reenact Section 53.1132 of the Code of Virginia relating to furloughs from local work release programs, approval by local sheriff and local chief law enforcement official, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, I would move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, when someone is at a regional jail and serving work release, there is a provision for allowing them to have a furlough to visit family, and this would say that such furlough is subject to the conditions of the local sheriff, when the local sheriff is not a member, or rather, his county is not a member of the regional jail. It would be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill.
House Bill 370. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22308 of the Code of Virginia relating to Board of Zoning Appeals Dual Office Holding, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, this would allow a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals to also work as an election official. Hope it will, the body will engross the bill, pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 406. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22510 of the Code of Virginia relating to comparative report of local government revenues and expenditures filing date, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Supremum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 406 simply moves the deadline for localities to submit their annual report for revenues and expenditures back two weeks. This is to give them more time and conform with other tax deadlines. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading. Thank you.
House Bill 505. A bill to amend and reenact.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
House Bill 50, I'm sorry. House Bill 406 go to the regular calendar after engrossment?
House Bill 406 will be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment. House Bill 505. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22314 of the Code of Virginia relating to Board of Zoning Appeals writ of certiorari, reported from counties, cities, and towns with amendment.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The amendments are agreed to. Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 505 is about Board of Zoning Appeals. This language puts a timeframe on this issue. Where the agreed party has 30 days to file, the court's timeframe is open-ended. This bill says after the writ of cert is served, the Board of Zoning Appeals will have 21 days to respond. Madam Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and move to its third reading.
Page 18, House Bill 515. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2835 of the Code of Virginia relating to urban county executive form of government, County Board of Social Services, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolova.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen of the House. The Enabling Authority for Urban County Forms of Government provides for the establishment of a Board of Social Services. Quick hint, Fairfax County is the only county using the urban county form. In addition to county residents, the county is also contractually obligated to provide these services to the cities of Falls Church and Fairfax. All three localities would like for the cities to have representation on the board. However, the current law requires members to be residents of the county. House Bill 515 simply authorizes the two cities to also have seats at the table. Madam Speaker, I move to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 632. A bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22286 of the Code of Virginia relating to zoning, development approvals, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate LaRocque.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 632 provides for the transition of certain existing development approvals when a subject property shifts from one jurisdiction to another due to annexation or boundary line adjustment or other cause. Madam Speaker, I move to have the bill engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Page 18, House Bill 849. A bill to amend Sections 24.2955 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to political campaign advertisements, applicability of disclosure requirements to advertisements placed or promoted for a fee on an online platform, reported from privileges and elections.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, in 2002, my predecessor, Jim Scott, introduced a bill that he, I suppose one of his proudest accomplishments was the Stand By Your Ad Bill. In 2002, he was the one, the bill that says that, you know, when you do TV and radio advertisements, your voice, your face has to come there. It's the reason at the end of all its political ads, you say, I'm Marcus Simon, and I endorse this ad, or I endorse this content. So it's my pleasure in 2020 to propose House Bill 849, which extends a lot of those same protections, to a new form of advertisements that didn't exist in 2002. So this would require us to put our own disclosures, saying who paid for and who authorized our advertisements and print video and so forth, when they appear in an online platform, online, on Facebook, on Twitter, and so forth. And so I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Page 19, House Bill 1062. A bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2955.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to elections, political campaign advertisements, definition of campaign telephone calls and telephone call text messages, reported from privileges and elections.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1062, like my colleague Delegate Simon's bill, seeks to ensure that we stand by our ad, and this would add text messaging to that disclosure requirement. We are in a modern age. Cell phones, text messages are ubiquitous. We want to make sure that if we're making claims about each other as political candidates, we are also standing by those claims. And I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1231. A bill to amend and reenact Section 9.1188 of the Code of Virginia relating to Department of Criminal Justice Services Crisis Intervention Team Training, reported from public safety with amendment.
Delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Wilt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? Shall the, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment is agreed to. Delegate Wilt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 1231 adds the Department of Aging and Rehabilitation Services and Brain Injury stakeholders to the list of entities with whom the Department of Criminal Justice Services are required to consult in developing a training program for all persons involved in the crisis intervention team programs, and requires the curriculum for such training program include a module on brain injury. Madam Speaker, I would say that law enforcement and the crisis intervention teams have discovered that a lot of the citizens that they, you know, come in contact with, part of the, part of the concern and part of the problem is that, from brain injuries. And so it's, it's critical that they be included in helping develop that. So I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
House Bill 1328, a bill to amend and reenact sections 53.1133.03 of the Code of Virginia relating to exchange of offender medical and mental health information and records, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1328 provides that any healthcare provider licensed by the Commonwealth, when requested for healthcare records of an individual who has been in their care in the last two years, by someone representing a jail or regional correctional facility, shall provide those records so that there is a continuing care for the individual that is in the correctional facility. It also provides that there would be no civil penal, no civil action attached as far as HIPAA is concerned to make, to give the comfort level to all those who are sharing these records. Any records that have to do with substance abuse would not be included in this bill. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bills are engrossed and passed on to their third reading.
House Bills on second reading, regular calendar. Page 20, House Bill 1071, a bill to amend and reenact section 18.2388 of the Code of Virginia relating to profane swearing in public, reported from Courts of Justice with substitute.
The Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, this bill was pulled from the calendar for technical adjustment. Hope it will be the pleasure of the body to reengross this bill so that it would remove profane swearing from our Code of Virginia. Thank you.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 983, a bill to amend and reenact sections 46.21023 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to traffic incident management vehicles, reported from transportation with substitute.
The Delegate from Fairfax.
And there is a floor substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to reject the committee substitute, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Shall the committee substitute be?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate, Delegate, Fairfax Delegate Simon.
It sounds like what the delegate wants to do is to have us reject her committee substitute. So when you ask if the substitute shall be agreed to, that those people that want to support what the patrons trying to do should all yell no. Is that correct, Madam Speaker?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to?
No.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
No.
The committee substitute fails. Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move a floor amendment in the, in the nature of a substitute. The floor substitute makes amendments that are purely technical in nature. The Transportation Committee voted to incorporate HB 635, Delegate LaRocque's bill, into my HB 983. However, this change was never reflected in the substitute for HB 983. So this substitute fixes that issue, reflects that HB 635 was incorporated into HB 983. We're also taking this opportunity to make a one-word technical amendment throughout the document to fix an instance where the word incident was left out in the phrase "traffic incident management." So there is no substantial change or substance change to this bill that passed out of the Transportation Committee unanimously. So I move the floor amendment. Floor amendment in the nature of a substitute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The floor amendment passes. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 371, a bill to repeal the second enactment of Chapter 9 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018 relating to adoption by stepparent, background check, sunset, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Madam, Madam Speaker, I would move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, in 2018, we passed House Bill 227. It was a bill by Delegate Stolli to require that before a court decided whether or not to do a full investigation or review before a potential parent was made a, an adoptive parent, that they look at the results of a national criminal background check that passed with a sunset. This removes the sunset and also applies the provision to close relative adoptions. Hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 21, House Bill 1394, a bill to amend and reenact section 22.1207.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to family life education programs, materials, summaries, reported from education with substitute.
The Delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Lefwitch.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Lefwitch.
Madam Speaker, there should be a floor amendment to this as well. Turned that in a few minutes ago. So perhaps we should just, may I ask if we take this by temporarily until we straighten that out and put it at the end of the document?
House Bill 1394 will go by temporarily.
All those in favor of HB 1394 going by temporarily shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? HB 1394 goes by temporarily.
Page 21, House Bill 630 has gone by for the day. House Bill 789 has gone by for the day. Page 22, House Bill 949, a bill to amend and reenact section 4.1206 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, privileges of local special events licenses, reported from general laws with substitute.
The Delegate from Faukeer, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 949 changes the local special events license from 12 days to 16 days, and it actually allows the license to be held for an entire weekend. That way, a town doesn't have to get three different licenses to be able to have a festival all weekend. And I ask the body engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 23, House Bill 390, a bill to amend and reenact sections 3.2102 and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal sections 4.1206 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, license and fee reform, reported from general laws with substitute.
The Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 390 is an ABC omnibus bill that reorganizes the ABC Code. House Bill 390 is a product of extensive study during the interim about Virginia ABC authority. The Senate Subcommittee and the House ABC Subcommittee, along with the new chairman, Bolova, who's chief co-patron, had a lot of input into this. Legislation accomplishes many objectives, but this legislation brings to a true and effective regulatory reform to licensing and permitting functions of Virginia ABC. And through the combination of these existing privileges, the variety of current licenses are reduced by 50%. But it's important to note that while those numbers are reduced, not a single current license privilege held by anyone is sacrificed. We've reduced pages in the code book, and many more pages of now unneeded regulation will be eliminated with additional regulatory reform authorized in this bill. And significant outreach was undertaken with stakeholders during the study and during the development of the legislation, and it enjoys support from wide and diverse group. And HB 390 is a great example of regulatory reform, of reducing red tape, and for making complicated licensing systems much leaner and simpler for the benefits of Virginia. Most all of this bill has a delayed effective date of July 1, 2021. Madam Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Page 23, House Bill 1, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2416.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, no excuse required.
Shall, shall the bill, shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? HB 390 is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2416.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, no excuse required, reported from Privileges and Elections with substitute.
The Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of this House. This bill removes the excuse requirement for casting an absentee ballot and will allow any registered Virginia voter to vote by absentee ballot in any election in which they are eligible to vote. This bill will also remove all references to excuses from the code. This will, bill will allow Virginia now to join the majority of states that do not require an excuse to vote absentee. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 24, House Bill 2, a bill to amend and reenact sections 18.2308.2 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to firearm transfers, criminal history record information check, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
Madam Speaker, could that bill go by temporarily?
And there is a floor substitute.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Could the bill go by temporarily?
All those, HB 2, shall HB 2 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? HB 2 will go by temporarily.
House Bill 9, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 4 of Section 7 of Title 18.2, a section numbered 18.2287.5 relating to reporting lost or stolen firearms, civil penalty, reported from public safety.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Could that bill also go by temporarily?
Shall HB 9 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? HB 9 shall go by temporarily.
House Bill 57, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2311 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to elections, date of June primary election, reported from Privileges and Elections.
Delegate from Hanover, Delegate Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, we've all seen this bill before. What House Bill 57 essentially does is moves the primary voting day from the second Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in June. In the legislation, you'll see it also adjusts the filing requirements, the filing declarations, petitions, et cetera. Also makes, changes to the methods of nomination other than primaries. It also makes changes to the presidential election year primaries. Again, one of the primary reasons for this bill is the conflict in the second Tuesday in June, Madam Speaker, thank you, with the conflict with schools were open. Again, most of our precincts, just, you know, for whatever reason, are located in public schools. This bill is supported by VACO, the Registars Association, VML, Greta Caucus, et cetera. So we've, I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill, pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 25, House Bill 150, a bill to amend and reenact section 15.2907.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to derelict residential buildings, civil penalty, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, I ask that it be passed by for the day.
HB 150, shall HB 150 go by for the day? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? HB 150 goes by for the day.
House Bill 166, a bill to amend and reenact section 15.22204 of the Code of Virginia relating to notice by localities, reported from counties, cities, and towns with amendments.
The Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, I move the amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Knight.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 166 is a bill to allow localities in Planning District 23, which includes Virginia Beach, to proceed with a planning commission meeting if the notice has been advertised on the city's website and the local paper has been notified to run the notice, but even if the paper fails to do so. Madam Speaker, I move the House engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 26, House Bill 186, a bill to amend and reenact section 24.2604.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to Election Day Page Program, Central Absentee Voter Precincts, reported from Privileges and Elections.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 186 is put at the request of the, my locality, the city of Falls Church. They have a very robust page program where they get young high school students to help out at the polls, to hand out papers and help people, you know, understand what's going on, move people around, keep the lines moving. They find it's a good source of getting some younger elections officers interested in the whole process and come in and doing it. But they only have three polling places, and they'd like to, they have more pages than they have polling places. So they'd like for their pages to be able to work in the central absentee precinct as well, and this bill would allow that. I hope it's the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 207, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2416.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, no excuse required, permanent absentee voter list, reported from Privileges and Elections with amendments.
The Delegate from Enrico, Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 207 allows any registered voter to vote by absentee ballot in any election they are qualified to vote. The bill also allows a registered voter to vote absentee and continue to vote absentee by default unless they request to be removed from the list, cancel the registration, or an absentee ballot sent to the voter is returned undeliverable. It is my hope that the, it will be the will of the body for the bill to be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, the Delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate O'Rourke at the floor.
Madam Speaker, I rise, let's just slow down and take a deep breath on this one. Because I can tell you from experiences that I've observed in recent election cycles, and in particular, as we've gone to making it easier for individuals to register to vote, which has been a good thing, it was very well intended, through their DMV. And I can tell you, in my district, I have seen any number of instances where an individual changed something with DMV, did not intend to make any changes relative registration, but in fact, they received a change of status from the registrar. Just this past fall, I found, had one of my constituents who received a notification from Prince William County advising her of her new voting precinct. Let me emphasize, my constituent. She lives in Spotsylvania. She has never lived in Prince William. She has a rental property in Prince William. And what had happened was someone had, in fact, committed fraud. In Prince William, they had used that rental address and signed under her name, and subsequently were going to be entitled to vote in Prince William County. The only way that was resolved was she had to present in Spotsylvania County to the registrar with photo ID to affirm she was the individual in question and still living in Spotsylvania. My concern with this bill, as I voted for the no fault or no excuse, you know, needed for absentee voting, I think to make it a permanent feature creates a tremendous potential for whether intended or unintended, diffusing the integrity of the voter process in that so much as until the registrar has notification that the person wishes to cancel, has moved or been deceased, they will continue to send that absentee ballot to that address whereby if some individual at that address opens the ballot, yes, commits a felony by marking the ballot and attesting that is who signed it and send it in, I think we markedly diminish the integrity of our process. I agree to the underlying premise of no excuse absentee voting, but I think to go to a permanent absentee voting process and not requiring renewal every year does more harm than good. So I hope it be the pleasure of the body to not engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill shall be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 27, House Bill 246, a bill to amend and reenact Section 9.1102 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 1 of Chapter 17 of Title 15.2, a section numbered 15.21723.1, relating to local law enforcement agencies' body worn camera systems, reported from public safety.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 246 requires localities prior to installing and operating a police body worn camera system to set up a written policy after public comment so that everybody knows what they're doing. It's based on the guidelines as the Department of General Justice Services, and I urge everyone here to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 421, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 15.2915 and 15.2915.5 of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal 15.2915.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to control of firearms by localities, reported from public safety.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Madam Speaker, can that go by temporarily?
All those in favor of HB 421 going by temporarily say aye. Those opposed? HB 421 will go by temporarily.
House Bill 549, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2901 of the Code of Virginia relating to cutting of overgrown vegetation local authority, reported from counties, cities, and towns.
Delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 549 is brought to us by, from the city of Hampton. It may not even involve your community or your district. It just authorizes any locality within Planning District 23, or that has a population of at least 75,000, to include provisions for cutting overgrown shrub trees and other vegetation in accordance with requiring certain landowners to cut the grass weeds and other foreign growth or certain property. What this bill seeks to alleviate are those neighborhoods and then those homes where perhaps the homeowners are no longer living there, maybe the heirs of a deceased family member has gone on to another state, and they have no idea what that property is looking like. For whatever reason, everything is all overgrown, and it is not only unsightly, it is downright dangerous. Sometimes the shrubs are so overgrown that they totally obscure the home completely. I have pictures, and we were shown in committee, homes in the city of Hampton where you could not see the house. It's one of those houses where if you were knocking on doors, you would not go because you would fear for your safety. And the city of Hampton is just asking for other localities with more than 75,000 people that if you are in one of these neighborhoods, not only can you ask that they cut the grass, but they could also be allowed to trim the shrubbery. I hope it's the pleasure of this House to engross this bill and send it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 28, House Bill 585, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 15.2223.4 relating to the Comprehensive Plan, Transit Oriented Development, reported from counties, cities, and towns with amendment.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move an amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 585 asks cities greater than, with more than 20,000 population, and counties with greater than 100,000 population to make changes in their comprehensive plans. It is a scientific fact that climate change is impacted by the actions of humans. Virginia and her localities need to do their part to curb their fossil fuels emissions. This bill would make localities plan around public transit to ensure that it's accessible and useful for citizens of these counties. By directing localities to coordinate new development in both housing and transportation, we can enable them to fight climate change at a local level and supplement the work we do statewide without infringing on their ability to govern as they wish. This just asks localities to look at these things in their comprehensive plans. It does not mandate any specific actions and leaves localities the flexibility to address pollutants with solutions that work best within their jurisdiction. It is my hope that it's the will of this body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 674, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2308.09 and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and by adding a section numbered 19.2387.3 relating to firearms, removal from persons posing substantial risk, penalties, reported from public safety.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Could 674 go by temporarily?
Shall 674 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? HB 674 will go by temporarily.
House Bill 812, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2308.2:2 of the Code of Virginia relating to purchase of handguns, limitation on handgun purchases, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May House Bill 812 go by temporarily as well?
Shall HB 812 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? HB 812 will go by temporarily.
Page 29, House Bill 1004, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2308.1:4 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to protective orders, possession of firearms, surrender or transfer of firearms, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Could House Bill 1004 go by temporarily?
Shall HB 1004 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The House will come to order. The clerk shall continue with the calendar.
Page 29, House Bill 1083, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.256.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to allowing access to firearms by minors, penalty.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Madam Speaker, can House Bill 1083 go by temporarily?
Shall HB 1083 go by temporarily? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? 1083 will go by temporarily.
House Bill 1116, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 24.2511 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to political parties, notification of adoption of primary elections, certification of candidates, reported from privileges and elections.
The delegate from Charlottesville, Delegate Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, House Bill 1116 was submitted on behalf of the Department of Elections. It streamlines their process for reporting results in party-run primaries. Under current state code, local party chairs are responsible for reporting results to the Department of Elections. This bill would make the state party chair responsible for transmitting those results for all of their party's candidates. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30, House Bill 1402, a bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2643 of the Code of Virginia relating to polling place procedures, residence address, voter not announced, reported from privileges and elections with amendment.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is House Bill 1402, and some of you may remember it from last year. It was a bill carried by our speaker. I just want to mention that. What this bill does is that at your polling location, the election official will always give your name and your address. And what this bill seeks to do is have it so that only your name is announced and not your address, so that when you are voting, no one will say, this is Mary Jane, she lives 123 Sycamore Street, and everyone knows where you live. And some people have issues with having their address blasted all over the polling location. So the purpose of this bill is to have it so that your name is just announced and not your voting location, and not your home address. And when you think about it, when you go to a pharmacy, drugstore, to pick up some medication, and they want to double-check your address, it is not broadcast it loud where everyone can hear it. It's a privacy issue. And so I ask that you engross this bill and send it on to its third reading.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The committee amendment is agreed to. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 15 of the calendar, House Bill 238, a bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2709 as it is currently effective and as it shall become effective of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, deadline for returning absentee ballot, reported from privileges and elections.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. I had this bill last year, and it passed 99 to nothing. And I think what happened to me is I had three bills in Senate P&amp;E, and they passed the first two, and I said, they are not giving Sickles three bills that day. And that's why this did not get out of the other body. But what it does is another bill that is premised on the performance of the U.S. Postal Service. They have problems, and I'm not blaming them for anything, but when Terry Kilgore was growing up, if he mailed his absentee ballot in on a Saturday, there was a pretty good shot that it would be there by 7:00 PM on Election Day. That is not a good presumption today. And so what this bill does is move the day that it counts with the postmark on it, Election Day postmark, to the same time as the provisional ballots are counted, which is noon on Friday of that week. So it's a, it's a postmark bill, and I hope it has the same success that it had last year, even though this was moved to the regular calendar. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to consider this closely and move it on to its third reading, and I so move.
Shall the bill be engrossed?
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate.
Might the patron yield for a question?
Yield.
Would, depending on the physical location of the voter, if the voter is not at, is in Virginia, let's say he's in California, would it not allow a postmark and a ballot to be dropped in the post office after our election hour has ended?
Will the delegate yield?
And, Madam Speaker, I guess that is a possibility, that I'm sure there'd be a lot of people in California voting that, sending their vote in at 5:00 PM, California, which would be 8:00 PM here, but I don't think that would happen often, if at all. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 21 of the calendar, House Bill 1394, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1207.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to Family Life Education Programs, Materials, Sumories, reported from Education with substitute.
Delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Lefwitch.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And if I may inquire as to whether or not the floor amendment is ready.
There is a floor amendment.
So, Madam Speaker, may I speak to the floor amendment?
Yes, Delegate Lefwitch. Actually, I believe there's a substitute.
We've adopted, I think we adopted a substitute.
Okay, the clerk shall report the floor amendment.
Floor amendment to House Bill 1394, offered by Delegate Lefwitch. This is short. Line 16, substitute after website, strike and insert, or made available through a parental portal.
Okay. Speaking to the amendment.
Delegate Lefwitch.
Speaking to the amendment and the, well, may I move the amendment, adoption of the amendment?
All those in favor of the floor amendment say aye. Those opposed? Floor amendment is adopted.
Hey, Madam Speaker, members of the body, I appreciate the body indulging me on that amendment. And so with this amendment, the bill would require school divisions to post family life education material on their website or a parent portal, which was, that amendment was in response to a comment or desire from somebody that sat on the full committee of education. It does not Committee of Education. It does not dictate what can be taught or is not taught. Whatever that school division elects to teach would be posted. Written materials would be posted for, the print materials would be posted, and the visual materials would be summarized. I ask that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 24 of the calendar, House Bill 2, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2, 308.2, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to firearm transfers, criminal history, record information, check, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the adoption of the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Plum.
Madam Chairman, point of order.
Yes, Delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
Madam Chairman, my question was, or to the point, I thought I heard the clerk announce there was a floor substitute. And we took action on the recommended committee substitute without the author of the floor substitute speaking to the matter to determine whether the body might prefer the floor substitute version or not.
The floor, so the patron of the floor substitute, of the floor amendment, is that Delegate Ferris, would you like to speak to the floor substitute?
Madam Speaker?
Floor amendment.
Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon. Delegate Simon, yes.
Madam Speaker, isn't it true that we just adopted the committee substitute, and that under the rules established by the prior speaker, once the committee substitute is adopted, the floor substitute is no longer in order?
I believe that's correct.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
But is it not correct, under Jefferson's manual, that if you have more than one amendment pending, if the speaker rules that one is broader than the other, then that would be the one considered first, and if it failed, then the other amendment would be considered? Given that I did not hear such a ruling from the speaker, I think we might have just been moving along in the process maybe a little too hastily this afternoon, and it was just an inadvertent error that we didn't hear the explanation of the alternative amendment before the body took action.
I believe this has been the custom in practice for the last two years, so I believe Delegate Simon is correct.
Madam Speaker--
Yes, Delegate from Caroline--
Inquiry.
Delegate O'Rourke.
So is the new custom in practice, given that during my tenure, in spite of what staff may be giving counsel, I have never heard an incident where an individual is not afforded the courtesy of explaining the alternative. So am I presuming this afternoon that that will be the new practice, where we will have a measure put forward without an alternative idea being presented to the body?
I believe this has been the practice from the previous speaker for the last two years, but we'll go at ease, and I'll get right back to you. The House will come to order. Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I move that we reconsider the vote in which we adopted the committee substitute to House Bill 20, House Bill 2. Sorry, Madam Speaker, can I restate the motion?
Yes, Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, having voted on the prevailing side on which we adopted the committee substitute to House Bill 2, I move that we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on HB 2, shall, the adoption of the committee substitute shall say aye. All those opposed, the motion's agreed to.
Madam Speaker, another motion, I ask that the bill go by temporarily.
All those in favor of the bill HB 2 going by temporarily, say aye. Those opposed, HB 2 will go by temporarily.
Returning to page 24 of the calendar, House Bill 9, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 4 of Chapter 7 of Title 18.2, a section numbered 18.2, 287.5, relating to reporting lost or stolen firearms, civil penalty, reported from public safety.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill?
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, this bill is relatively simple. House Bill 9 simply requires that those who own and possess a firearm that becomes lost or is stolen, report that to either the local law enforcement agency or the Virginia State Police, so that that can be transmitted into the NCIC. Failure to do so within those 24 hours will result in a $250 civil penalty. We're not making it criminal, it's a civil fine. The bill also provides protections for those who do, in good faith, report a lost or stolen firearm from criminal or civil liability for any acts or omissions that result from that loss and theft. However, that immunity does not apply to a person who gives a false report, and the bill does not apply to the loss or theft of a antique firearm. Madam Speaker, it would be my hope that we would engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 27 of the calendar, House Bill 421, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 15.2, 915, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal 15.2, 915.1, relating to control of firearms by localities reported from public safety.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, Madam Speaker, members. House Bill 421 would allow local governments to enact ordinances to regulate firearms within their locality. The ordinances would be subject to the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, federal law, and state law, according to the supremacy clause in Section 1-248 in the Virginia Code. House Bill 421 would allow for local leaders who know their community's gun violence prevention needs to best respond to keep their residents safe. House Bill 421 is permissive and not mandatory, meaning that only localities that want to enact ordinances would do so. Additionally, current law requires localities to resell firearms that are surrendered to them or that they obtain through buy-back or give-back programs. House Bill 421 would allow localities to instead destroy firearms that come into their possession when the person turning them in wishes for them to do so. Finally, Madam Speaker, this bill repeals the provisions in 15.2-915.1, which prohibits localities from suing gun manufacturers and dealers. This will enable localities to hold these entities accountable when appropriate. I would hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be--
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Rush.
Thank you. Will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield? Delegate will yield. Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Delegate Price. Would your bill allow localities to ban certain types of firearms or magazines from their jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Speaker, follow-up question, please?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Rush.
Madam Speaker, I'd ask the delegate, would her bill allow for different standards in each locality that pass these ordinances in transportation of firearms? For example, could a constituent of one of us have to have our firearm locked in the trunk or something in one jurisdiction and maybe different in another locality?
Delegate Price, will you yield?
Madam Speaker, I would say to the delegate that we, I appreciate the concern, but we already have a patchwork of laws with varying ordinances as it pertains to concealed carry and even some for assault weapons. Also, law-abiding gun owners deal with this when they're traveling out of state. And so I would answer that it is a gun owner's responsibility to know the laws and ordinances of where they live and where they plan to travel, so this would be no different.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Another question, please?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield.
The delegate will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate if she has heard of the over 100 jurisdictions that have declared themselves Second Amendment sanctuary cities or localities, and would these communities be able to use your law to ordinance that status?
Yes, and I would say, Madam Speaker, to the delegate, as the Solicitor General and the Secretary of Public Safety and Homeland Security answered when that question did come up in committee, all of the local ordinances that are passed must be in accordance with the United States Constitution, the state constitution, local law, and state law and federal law. And so part of that constitution is for localities and state-level employees to uphold the Constitution, and in that they would have to follow the laws that are on the books of the state.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill at the appropriate time.
Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the body. I would submit today that this bill, if your goal is to not make law-abiding gun owners criminals or be in violation of a local ordinance, you will not support this bill. This will create a patchwork of laws throughout the state where you could be legally carrying in one jurisdiction and cross a line and then be a criminal. And so what I would ask is that we do not engross this bill, and I hope we would not move it to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would the patron rise for a question?
Will the patron yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask the patron if this would allow a certain locality to ban the transport of firearms or certain classes of firearms within their local jurisdiction?
Madam Speaker, I would say to the delegate, as I answered previously to that question, yes.
One follow-up, Madam Speaker--
Delegate Davis.
Madam Speaker, so many of us live in Virginia Beach, and we have water majority around us. There's only two localities that allow us kind of exits or exits through. But if Virginia Beach were to ban the transport of firearms in that locality, however Suffolk allowed them to be utilized for, on their ranges or hunting, does the delegate have a process by which I could get my firearm from Virginia Beach to Suffolk without being deemed a felon?
Delegate Price.
Madam Speaker, I would say to the delegate that I appreciate his example that exemplifies his previous question, to which I already answered. What I would answer this time and say is that the local leaders of those jurisdictions understand the region, understand how water works, and they together could get to an ordinance that they would want to keep them safe. As I said before, this is permissive, and they would not have to enact any ordinances. And there are several localities that have already expressed interest in having the ability to do this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill at the appropriate time.
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I appreciate the desires of the patron of the bill, and as many here, I come from local government, and usually appreciate the opportunity for local government to have the power over what fits them best. My concern here, Madam Speaker, is this patchwork of laws. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I keep hearing the term sometimes of entrapment, and I almost don't know how a patchwork of laws don't get created that almost creates a situation of entrapment for a law-abiding gun owner. I don't know what to do if my locality under this creates what some may consider reasonable gun legislation, but other localities allow more flexible use of firearms in their locality. How do I exercise that right in that locality if I can't get out of my own to utilize it there? Additionally, Madam Speaker, many of us may have this issue when we live in Virginia, and we know what these laws are. But I can only imagine people flying into Virginia tourists, those coming here to hunt, flying in here trying to understand all the different rules and laws that exist across all the different localities, to not find themselves opposite and outside the course of law. So for that reason, I would ask that, even though this may be well-intended, and I can appreciate local options, I would ask that we do not engross this bill, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Price, you have the floor.
Thank you. I neglected to add in, I guess, some of the impetus for this. As this body has heard me say before, I am probably one of very few of the people sitting on this floor that gets awakened at night by gunfire, or has to alter the way that I get from the grocery store to my home based on gun violence that might be perpetrated. So while I can appreciate the concerns about inconvenience for law-abiding gun owners, I would add that law-abiding, as defined, is acting in accordance with the law. And so if the laws change, those law-abiding citizens would then act in accordance with the new law. Within a seven-day period, Madam Speaker, in 2019, from Memorial Day weekend, seven days after, in Hampton Roads, there were 55 people that were shot. And I know that the other side would say that it's not guns that kill people, it's people that kill-- people that kill people, but too many people have too many guns, and I would like for HB 421 to be engrossed and moved on to the third reading so that local leaders can keep their locality safe. Thank you.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Falkir, Delegate Weber.
I was wondering if the gentlelady, Delegate Price, would yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, this is the fifth year that I've presented this information. I do believe that House Bill 421 has had a fair and open discussion, so I do not yield.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Weber.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, as the delegate eloquently said, that law-abiding citizens would like to follow the law. The problem with this bill is that a law-abiding citizen will not know whether they are breaking the law. If you would like law-abiding citizens to stay law-abiding citizens, then having a patchwork across the Commonwealth is not going to do that. What's going to happen, as has been explained before, is that you will have a law-abiding citizen who's going to drive from Loudoun County, and they'll come down to South Side to go rabbit hunting with Delegate Fowler. Meanwhile, along that trip, there has been several localities that have passed varying degrees of ordinances. There is no sign, as you pass by those localities or that county, that says, here's what our gun ordinances are. That trip can be a quick trip, it could be a day trip, it could be Delegate Fowler calling me up and saying, hey, Mike, we're going to go rabbit hunting, or we're going to go target shooting, or we're going to go do a three-gun competition, at which point, a lot of the various firearms that we have been discussing over the course of this session are actually used in competition. The problem also is that not only does the average citizen traveling from county to county, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, from town to county, not know which it is or what various ordinances are, but you also create an incident where if that person is pulled over, that person is visiting their friend, and they encounter law enforcement, altercations could then occur as well. That's why I strongly urge that this body reject this bill from engrossment, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
I move the pending question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading. Recorded vote. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Recorded vote, vote on the electronic voting board. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero.
Ayes 53, nays 46, abstentions zero. The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 28 of the calendar, House Bill 674, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2, 308.09, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and by adding a section numbered 19.2, 387.3, relating to firearms, removal from persons possessing substantial risk, penalties reported from public safety.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and members of the House, HB 674 creates a substantial risk order, commonly known as an ERPO, or, I don't like this term, but a lot of people call it a red flag law. What it does, Madam Speaker, is it creates a mechanism for law enforcement to temporarily remove a firearm from someone who has been found by a judge to be a risk to sell for others. Madam Speaker and members of the House, this is a bipartisan idea. Seventeen other states, including Florida, which did so after Parkland, and Indiana, have passed ERPO bills. There is lots of Republican support all around the country for this idea, Madam Speaker. Senator Scott, who was governor of Florida right at the time of Parkland, supports this and signed the bill. Senator Rubio, President Trump supports ERPO bills, Vice President Pence, and our Attorney General William Barr has sworn under oath, his view, that, quote, "ERPOs are the single most important thing we can do," end quote, in this area. And when we pass 674, Madam Speaker and members of the House, we will be doing what the President's Council, excuse me, Commission on School Safety recommended that all states do, a commission report signed by our Secretary of Homeland Security, our Attorney General, our Secretary of Health and Human Services, and our Secretary of Education. This is a bipartisan idea, Madam Speaker, at least outside of Virginia, and it ought to be here as well. This is as much a suicide prevention bill as anything else, Madam Speaker, directed, of course, at mass shooters, but also as much a suicide bill, in fact, maybe even more, because we all know that over 60% of the gun deaths in Virginia are suicides, and the statistics on how many of those are veterans is tragic. There are lots and lots of due process protections in 674, Madam Speaker, and let me take this moment to dispel a few misconceptions about 674. First, no one is guilty until proven innocent. The burden remains on authorities always, and to do so by clear and convincing evidence to make their case, and that burden and case must be made to a circuit court judge. None of the provisions of 674 are going to be used as a cudgel by an upset neighbor or an angry brother-in-law. There are stiff penalties contained in this bill for making false claims. And perhaps the biggest of all, ERPO bills have been found constitutional. 674 is constitutional, other states have so found, and this body need not be worried about that. Madam Speaker and members of the House, ERPO bills have been found and shown to save lives. There is academic research on this. We're always worried about evidence-based legislation. ERPO bills work, and they save lives. We are losing too many Virginians to gun violence, members of the House. I urge the body to engross 64 and send it on to its third reading so that we can save some lives in Virginia. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freedus.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the delegate yield for a question?
I'd be happy to yield.
Will the delegate yield? Delegate yields.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The delegate keeps referring to that a judge is required in order to issue this order, but as I'm reading through the language, it looks like a judge or a magistrate could actually issue the order. Could we get some clarification on what is actually required legally?
Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would answer the delegate's question by pointing out that there is a two-step process. First, there is an emergency order entered, and that can be by any judicial officer, very tightly curtailed to no more than 14 days. Doesn't have to be 14 days, but no more than 14 days, and within that timeframe, a circuit court judge must make the decision with a full opportunity for hearing whether or not that emergency order stays in effect and a substantial risk order is entered. So the subject of the order will be in front of a circuit court judge.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
Happy to yield.
Delegate will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, I'm a little bit confused exactly on the process here and the steps that are taking place. So if a magistrate issues, and it says right here that a judge or magistrate issues an emergency substantial risk order pursuant to subsection A, my question at that point is, what is the timeline now between police officers coming to someone's house and confiscating their property under the authority of that risk order? Does a judge have to see it before that process actually takes place, or does the judge enter in after that process has already taken place?
Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in 19.2-152.13, upon the petition of the Commonwealth, that's another sort of rumor that I need to dispel, people can't run straight to a judicial officer, it has to be a Commonwealth's attorney or a law enforcement. They can go before a judicial officer, the people we entrust every day in this Commonwealth to make decisions like this one, to issue an emergency order, and that emergency order can last no more than 14 days, and then a hearing must take place before a circuit court judge.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
Be happy to yield.
Delegate yields.
Again, I apologize to delegate, I'm not a lawyer, but the thing that I'm trying to, I'm not questioning on whether or not what happens in 14 days, I'm saying that a law enforcement officer goes to a magistrate, magistrate decides to issue the order. Is it 14 days before they go and confiscate someone's property, or can they go and confiscate the property as soon as the emergency order is delivered? That's, I'm wondering, where does the judge have to be in the process before the order is actually executed and the property is taken?
Delegate Sullivan.
Madam Speaker, the law is very clear, and again, I'll point to paragraph A of 19.2-152.13. What has to happen is first, someone has to approach law enforcement or a Commonwealth's attorney, who is then obligated to make an independent investigation, take testimony under oath, and then go before a judicial officer. That can be a magistrate, a general district court judge, or a circuit court judge, who then makes a determination based upon this sworn testimony and investigation as to whether an emergency exists at a level of probable cause, at which point, if all those conditions are met, an emergency substantial risk order is issued by that officer.
Delegate Freedus.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
Happy to yield.
Delegate yields. Delegate Freedus.
Can the delegate explain, thank you, Madam Speaker, can the delegate explain to us what the difference is with respect to the sort of legal experience or education which is required to become a judge versus to become a magistrate or to become a, yeah, leave it there.
Magistrates, judges, general district court judge, judges, or lawyers, magistrates are, this is the same judicial officer that issues arrest warrants all the time. These are judicial officers who are quite familiar with, particularly, for instance, the issues related to probable cause. A lot of our justice system is built on our magistrate officers, who are very well-trained.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the delegate, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Freedus, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think it's important to note here that typically, a judge has to have, is my understanding, passed the bar, practiced law, have a law degree in order to actually sit on the bench. They have to have some degree of subject matter expertise and experience with respect to issuing orders like this, whereas a magistrate doesn't technically have to have any of that. So the idea that we're allowing a magistrate to make these decisions, because ultimately what this is, is we are about to infringe on someone's essential civil liberty. I realize that some of my colleagues don't necessarily view it that way, but we certainly do on this side of the aisle, that this sort of protections for you to be able to maintain and be able to defend yourself is critical, and that's why it's enshrined in the Constitution, both of the United States and in Virginia, under Article I, Section 13. So I feel like what we're actually doing here is we're creating a circumstance where you're not guilty of anything, you haven't even been technically accused of anything that has already taken place, as the delegate mentioned, in cases of suicide, if someone thinks you might be a danger to yourself or others, now we're going ahead and issue this warrant by a magistrate, which can then authorize law enforcement to do a no-knock warrant on your house at 2:00 in the morning, no legal problem with that in this bill, and confiscate your property. And you, in that case, that looks to me like I've been denied my Fourth Amendment rights, my Fifth Amendment rights, to some degree, my Second Amendment rights, and potentially in the future, my First Amendment rights, as we're now going over and we're looking at various social media posts to determine whether or not someone actually qualifies as a significant or a substantial risk. This seems like a lot of leeway for the government to make a lot of mistakes in infringing on someone's, again, essential civil liberties, while at the same time denying them, and I think what most of us would consider normal practices of due process of law. And that's the concern that many of us have had with this, and I would also tell the gentleman that I certainly think it's noble that he wants to prevent people from committing suicide. I share that concern. And as Delegate Helmer said, we've had a problem within the veteran community, where we have, depending on which figures you choose, 17 to 22 veterans a day committing suicide, and all of us want to address that, but if someone who has been on the phone with friends of mine that I've served with at 2:00 in the morning, talking them back from the ledge, I'll guarantee you right now, we pass something like this, where all of a sudden, reaching out to me, or reaching out to family, or reaching out to a healthcare professional, means that the police are going to show up and confiscate their guns, is not going to cause them to seek help, it's going to further stigmatize them and lead them to greater isolation. So my problem with this is not just because I think it does violate essential civil liberties while denying due process of law, my problem with this is also I think it's actually going to work contrary to the intended purpose, and so I hope it will be the will of the body to not pass this bill on to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Chair, I rise for a motion.
Yes, Delegate.
I move the pending question.
All those in favor of the pending questions, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 28 of the calendar, House Bill 812, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2, 308.2:2 of the Code of Virginia relating to purchase of handguns, limitation on handgun purchases, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill, House Bill 812, is not a new bill to any of us. This bill would reinstate Virginia's successful one handgun a month law, and it prohibits individuals from purchasing more than one handgun in a 30-day period. It exempts law enforcement agencies and individuals who have undergone extensive background checks. A little background that might, that is quite important, we know that legally purchased handguns are often diverted illegally into our communities, contributing to the day-to-day violence emergency that we are facing in the Commonwealth. Limited handgun purchases to one a month will help to stem the illegal flow of firearms into some vulnerable communities such as mine and some others who live in some urban areas and improve public safety. In effect, if enacted, this bill will still allow law-abiding citizens to purchase up to 12 handguns a month in a calendar year, I'm sorry. This legislation would help curtail handgun trafficking and stockpiling by reinstating the one handgun a month law. I hope it's a pleasure of this body to engross this bill and send it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 29 of the calendar, House Bill 1004, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2, 308.1:4, and 18.2, 308.1:2:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to protective orders, possession of firearms, surrender or transfer of firearms, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, HB 1004 is a bill that says that if you are the subject of a permanent protective order, so that means that you were served with the emergency protective order, had a full hearing before a judge, and then the judge was to find that the protective order should last for two years, then if that occurs, you are no longer to have firearms, and you are to give them up either to the police or certify to the court that you've given them or sold them. It makes it a Class 6 felony to continue to possess firearms after that period. This bill is there to be able to protect those who have been the victims of domestic and sexual violence. That, Madam Speaker, is the bill. I'd move that we engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Madam Speaker, will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I will yield.
The delegate will yield.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the gentleman, he, I believe, represented in committee that this bill essentially was already covered under federal law, if I'm quoting correctly. Does he still believe that to be the case?
Delegate Mullin.
This bill goes a little bit more beyond just the federal law, but yes, there is a federal law that says those who are permanently, the subject of a permanent protective order need not be possessing firearms.
Delegate Gilbert.
Madam Speaker, will the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
I will yield.
Delegate Mullin yields.
Madam Speaker, then, I would ask the gentleman if he is aware, not just that it goes a little beyond, but if he is aware that this creates an entirely new category of respondents to a protective order who would now be ineligible to possess a firearm subject to criminal penalties that is not covered under federal law, that federal law does not cover the entirety of the protective orders covered in the delegate's bill, and by that, I mean, under federal law, I believe, an intimate partner, or the equivalent in Virginia, would be people who go to JDR Court, family members, people who live together and so forth, that this bill bill also covers, and that would be protective orders pursuant to 16.1, 279.1, family abuse-type protective orders that are good for two years. Is the delegate aware that 19.2, 152.10 is a completely different, not covered under federal law, and actually encompasses all the neighborly disputes that we see so often in the quasi-criminal setting in the courtrooms that we visit regularly, where a person can get a protective order against their neighbor, not against their spouse, not against their loved one, against just some other citizen, and that does this bill not cover those people also, and am I also correct that that's not covered under federal law?
Delegate Mullin.
Well, that's quite a compound question. So, yes, I am aware, yes, it is our intent to do that, and if you are subject of a permanent protective order, you are a threat to someone else.
Madam Speaker, will the delegate yield for another question?
Delegate Gilbert. Will delegate yield? Delegate yields.
And now, I'm just trying to reconcile what was represented in committee, Madam Speaker. So, the gentleman said very expressly, all of this is already covered under federal law. Is that the case?
Delegate Mullin.
Madam Speaker, I would say to the delegate that I believe what I said in the committee was, we are going to enforce this, and that is that we are going further, but if I had said something different in subcommittee, I certainly had no intention to misrepresent and maybe would have misspoken.
I appreciate the delegate. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page 29 of the calendar, House Bill 1083, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2, 56.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to allowing access to firearms by minors, penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, HB 463 is a common sense child access prevention bill. This bill is about protecting our most precious ones, our children. This is about being responsible with your weapon. Madam Speaker, when I was trained by the best in law enforcement to make sure that the issued weapon that we were presented with, that we carry those weapons in a responsible, safe manner. Under this bill, it would be a Class VI felony to recklessly, recklessly being the operative word. It would be a Class VI felony to recklessly leave a loaded, unsecured firearm in such a manner as to endanger the life or limb of any person under the age of eighteen. This bill increases the punishment for allowing a child access to loaded, unsecured firearms from a Class III misdemeanor to a Class VI felony. It also makes the offense applicable to all children, raising the age of a child from age fourteen to eighteen. This will prevent children without adequate supervision or training from accessing firearms and ensure that firearms are properly secured in homes. In other words, don't leave your loaded, unsecured firearm lying around on the din table while you run out to eat a snack on the back porch. Child access prevention laws are designed to prevent minors from coming into contact with firearms stored in the home. Florida passed the first child access prevention law in 1989, which held parents and guardians criminally responsible for negligently storing firearms within access of children. Virginia passed its first child access prevention law in 1992. Virginia's law holds individuals criminally liable if they recklessly leave a loaded, unsecured firearm in such a manner as to endanger the life or limb of any child under the age of fourteen. The penalty is merely a Class III misdemeanor, which is only a finable offense of up to $500. Raising the age from fourteen to eighteen, why is it that we're doing this in this bill? It's because twenty-eight states, including DC, have cap laws, and of these twenty-eight states, seventeen, including DC, cover all children under the age of eighteen. Virginia is tied for the lowest age covered with Illinois, Iowa, and Wisconsin. Madam Speaker, cap laws are associated with 64% decrease in self-inflicted gun injuries among youth, and an 8.3% decrease in suicide rates among youth aged fourteen to seventeen. Madam Speaker, this bill does not, does not infringe upon the rights of anyone's Second Amendment rights, it's just simply saying, if you're going to carry your weapon, be responsible with it, and make sure that we prevent the reckless behavior of leaving a loaded, unsecured firearm in the presence of minors. Madam Speaker, it's my hope that we will engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Delegate from Halifax, Delegate Edmonds.
Madam Speaker, will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield, Madam Speaker.
The delegate will yield.
Madam Speaker, if I may present a scenario. Suppose I'm hunting with my sixteen-year-old daughter, who I've been hunting with for years, both together and separately, and who's also successfully completed a hunter's safety course, and she's hunting by herself, and she, and an accident occurs. Accidents happen. Would I then be in violation of this code as proposed in the substitute, and thereby be guilty of a Class VI felony as a father, on top of whatever grief that might arise from the result of an accident?
Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To the delegate, Madam Speaker, I would just simply say, the operative word in this bill is reckless, and that would be left up to the discretion of the prosecutor in this particular situation. And if you don't leave a situation with your weapon in the hands of a minor recklessly, recklessly is the operative word. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Hayes. Delegate Edmonds? Shall?
Madam Speaker?
Yes. Delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Fades.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield, Madam Speaker.
Delegate yields.
I think the delegate, I would just ask right here, are we, does this bill also carry with it a mandatory minimum, Madam Speaker?
Delegate Hayes.
I don't believe so, Madam Speaker. Not a Class VI felony.
Delegate Fades.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield, Madam Speaker.
Delegate will yield.
So, I understand that there was a, thank you, Madam Speaker, I understand that there was actually a case in Richmond where somebody was charged because they had actually left, they had a .22 caliber rifle, they had had it in their room, and a child had actually come up and taken the rifle down and was injured later. So, my question to the delegate would be, if I had a sidearm on my nightstand table that we use for home defense, and I had rounds in the magazine, would that be considered at that point a loaded weapon, and would it be considered recklessly leaving that loaded weapon if it was just on my nightstand in my room?
Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, Madam Speaker, to the delegate, it would be left up to the discretion of that prosecutor of whether or not your actions were actually reckless. And so, I would just simply say, don't leave your loaded, unsecured firearm recklessly in the presence of minors. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker?
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
Delegate will yield.
And I appreciate that very much, Madam Speaker. Will, I would ask the gentleman, he keeps referring to the recklessly language, but am I not correct that that only applies to part of this bill, that in fact, under the scenario that Delegate Edmonds just posed to the gentleman, in a hunting situation, there's Section B, line fourteen of the substitute, it is merely unlawful to knowingly authorize, et cetera, that the recklessly term only applies to Section A, leaving a firearm about, and not to the unauthorized or unsupervised hunting scenario, that the recklessly he keeps repeating does not apply to the scenario Delegate Edmonds mentioned. Is that not correct?
Delegate Hayes.
Madam Speaker, I'm emphasizing recklessly because, over the history of carrying this bill, we continue to hear example after example from people trying to get away from the fact that we are to be responsible with our weapons. And all this bill is saying is that if you're going to carry your weapon, to be responsible with your weapon. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Madam Speaker, I rise for motion.
Delegate McQuinn.
I move the pending question.
All those in favor of moving the pending questions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading. The House shall stand at ease. The House shall stand at ease.
Because the committee substitutes before us, and he can kind of explain why. Has to reject. What? You vote on the committee substitute, then the floor substitute out. And then you have your. There, here it comes.
Madam Speaker, I would say, because the committees have students before us, and he can kind of explain why. Kind of explain that. Has to reject. Vote on that. You vote on the committee substitute, then the floor substitute out. And then you have your. There, here it comes.
Madam Speaker, I would say, because the committees have students before us, and he can kind of explain why. Kind of explain that. Has to reject. Vote on that. And then. You vote on the committee substitute, then the floor substitute out. And then you have your. There, here it comes.
The House will come to order.
Page 24, returning to page 24, House Bill 2, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2, 308.2, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to firearm transfers, criminal history record information, check penalty, reported from public safety with substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the adoption of the committee substitute.
All those in favor of the committee, oh, sorry, Delegate Ferris.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate Ferris.
I've offered amendment to House Bill 2, and I'd like to speak to that if I could.
Delegate Ferris, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen of the House, I hope that my talking points don't go beyond my legis, the amendments I've made today, the amendments I've made to House Bill 2, however I don't like the bill. Madam Speaker, on November the 8th, everybody's talking about things happening in their district. In my district, I woke up and I realized I wasn't happy. And on January the 8th, you and I talked about having to eat things this session that we didn't want to eat. But House Bill 2, the Democrats and the members of the committee have decided this was the best legislation they could come up with. Well, I'd like to argue that some, but I want to talk to you, talk to you about this apple. This apple is Virginia. And this apple is violence, call it gun violence, whatever you want to call it. None of us want violence for the people in Virginia. And Madam Speaker, we'd like to eat this apple, but this apple has a lot of parts to it. First off, shouldn't bring a knife to a gunfight, but. This apple has mental illness to it. This apple has bad judgments to it. This apple has a very small piece of evil people to it. And I would succumb to the thought that here in Virginia, we all want to do what's best for the people in Virginia. And I want to be a part of the discussion about gun legislation because it really affects me, affects my district, I think it affects everyone that wants to be safe. There's people that shouldn't have guns is a reason there are people that should have guns. And I believe that Virginia is a good place, full of good people. I feel like this room is a room full of good people that want to make good decisions. Now whether their voters did, looking at some of these seats, is argumentative, but I think that we need to work together to try to get this to a place that we can all live with. We've been, we've talked about children. I mean, who in the world would want to do anything to a child, cause harm to a child? I've been working with La Haas on some of this, and if my amendment was to be added to this bill, I would vote in favor of this bill, though I'm not, don't like all of it. I want to work hard for the people in Virginia to get this right. My bill, my amendments deal with wheels so that estates can be done properly, you don't have, wouldn't have to go back because of change in this legislation, and rewrite wheels. It also deals with guns that, dealing with livestock, treating livestock. And there's some other places that I really hope that the Secretary and the Governor will work on in this bill, because I think your writing's on the wall. Y'all are going to do something when I say y'all, but let's remember, we all want to stop violence, so let's eat this apple one piece at a time and not try to swallow it. Thank you.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Madam Speaker, I move we adopt the amendment nature of substitute, committee amendment.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Plum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this bill would establish a universal background check system in Virginia, requiring criminal history record checks for all firearm sales and transfers, including sales originating online, sales at gun shows, and all private sales. And speaking, ladies and gentlemen of the House, this is not a new subject to come to us in Virginia. I was around in 1989 when the public outrage at the death of a young child by gunfire led to a debate in this House that what we should have are background checks. And so compelling was that argument that we should keep guns out of the hands of criminals, that Virginia enacted the nation's first instant background check system. And it's still in place. Some people don't recognize that in Virginia, we have an instant background check system for purchasing firearms, and it's nationally recognized for the effective and efficient way it operates. You don't hear complaints about the state police not being able to carry out that responsibility with great ease and without delay. It's an instant system. And its intent was to provide safety to the public by making sure that guns didn't fall in the hands of those people who had demonstrated that they were violent. It's a fascinating thing to realize that in this past year, the state police conducted 446,333 background checks. And it is amazing that knowing that if you go through a background check and you have a record of felony convictions, that you've committed another crime, that there are 1,779 individuals who were found that they weren't eligible to purchase a firearm because of our existing background check. Now, what's the problem is that the background check now in place only applies if you go to a licensed federal guns dealer. That's the application. So for years, we talked about how do we close the gun show loophole? And I brought bills in year after year to close the gun show loophole. The response was, but yeah, there are all these other purchases of handguns, or guns, what are we going to do about those? And so this is a comprehensive effort to try to take a look at all the transfers of ownership of firearms so that we close those loopholes. You see that 443,000 that I mentioned? The estimate is that's about half the gun sales in Virginia. The other half don't have any background check. And so what this bill would do then would be to put in place a system that back home we'd say, well, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we're going to do background checks for some, we need to do background checks for all. Will this solve the problem? It will contribute to a resolution of the problem, because it will ensure then that when guns are transferred, they're not transferred to people who've already displayed violent behavior, a tendency towards violence because of the convictions that they've already had. So Madam Speaker, that is the bill. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading, so that we can finally then close the loop, have a total gun background check for all of our citizens who want to possess a firearm. Hopefully it'll be the pleasure of the House engross the bill and pass it for third reading.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With the patron yield for a question?
Will the patron yield?
I'd be happy to.
The patron will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a couple of questions for the patron. The first is, looking through this legislation, I was wondering if the patron could tell me what the longest time it may take for a private seller to receive the results of a background check once they've asked and requested it to be performed by a licensed, by a licensed dealer?
Madam Speaker, I would say to the gentleman that under current law, the background checks are essentially instant. Under this provision, since the system for doing the background checks on internet sales and so on, there's a 14-day provision. I fully anticipate that the state police will do what they did in 1989 when we asked them, how could you do instant background checks? And they came up with a system. We're going to ask them now to do a universal system, and I'm content that we're going to be able in the future to come back and reduce that number.
Madam Speaker, follow up, please.
Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask the delegate, I appreciate the 14 days, and I'm curious how he arrived at that, because I know there's a maximum 14-day response between the licensed dealer and the state police, after which it's deemed acceptable if no response is received. But am I not correct that there is no timeframe required between when the transferee or the seller of a private sale requests that a licensed dealer perform the background check? No minimum time that they have to actually request that with the state police in? Nor is there a minimum time that the licensed dealer has to respond back to the private seller upon receiving that response from the state police? And if so, would that mean that there is no maximum period of time that this could take for a private sale?
Delegate Plum.
Madam Speaker, I would say to the gentleman that we have a system in place that we now call instant. The state police have shown us how it is that they can turn this around. The notion that somehow now they would decide to, with some indefinite period of time, withhold their approval, I don't think is quite fair to the system as it now operates and has been demonstrated to operate. Ninety-nine percent of the requests are instant, those in which there's a question oftentimes result in those 1,800 people that we're talking about who will have had a prior conviction.
Delegate Davis. Would you yield for one more question?
Will the delegate yield?
I yield.
The delegate yields.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would ask the delegate, if there's any liability placed on the buyer or the transferee related to this background check?
Delegate Plum.
Madam Speaker, I would reply to the gentleman to say that the system will work essentially as it's working now. The only difference will be that we will go from sales at licensed federally gun dealers to universal checks that include such things as online and other sales and transfers.
Madam Speaker, I think the delegate would like to speak to the bill at the appropriate time.
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the intent of this bill, and we've always said, we want to ensure that people that should not have firearms, don't get firearms. But as we all know, it's about the details of legislation. And the first thing I'd like to direct people's attentions to, and I'm going to use line numbers of the initial bill, I don't have the line numbers of the substitute, but they're relatively similar. But if you look at lines 178 and 179, where it talks about persons subject to a temporary detention order who subsequently agreed to a voluntary admission. Now, Madam Speaker, my concern with this is that you're asking someone that does not have to undergo this voluntary admission for mental health or mental illness challenges that they may be facing, to do so knowing that if they do that, they will have to disclose that when they go to procure a firearm, and it understandably could impact their ability to possess a firearm, to protect themselves and their family. Now, I know that we all want to make sure that we look at having a way to protect people regarding firearms, but none of us want to do anything that impacts someone's desire to get help and support when they're facing a mental illness or mental health challenge. Next, I'd like to direct the body to lines 226 and 229. And what this does is it actually takes us from the minimum one day, or maximum of one day response on a background check to three days. Now, that impacts all of us law-abiding gun owners today, and we have to wait longer. And I understand that's just maybe what some would consider a small inconvenience. But the reason why I asked a question before, Madam Speaker, is although there is a maximum period for the state police to get back to a licensed gun dealer, 14 days, the process set out is someone to have a private sale, will go to the state police, or, well, sorry, go to a licensed dealer, to request a background check be done with the state police. There is no maximum or minimum amount of time that that licensed dealer can wait before requesting that background check be done by the state police. Once requested, there's a 14-day maximum there. Additionally, when the state police have the answer and get back to licensed dealer, there is no maximum amount of time that the licensed dealer has to get back to their private seller. And why this is so important is let's understand, private sellers compete with licensed dealers. This is kind of like having the fox guard the hen house. So what we've got here is a situation where you could wait a month or more than a month to complete a private sale or private transaction. Following on lines 415 and 416, when we were in committee, it was said by the administration that there is no liability on the buyer or the transferee of a weapon. But yet, if you look down on those lines on 415 and 416, you'll see that the section clearly states that the buyer or person receiving a weapon is liable if they are not able, if they do not obtain verification that this has been completed. Yet, if you refer back to lines 385 to 387, it's very clear that the process being created only creates an opportunity for a licensed dealer to communicate with the state police to receive verification. So in other words, we're going to hold the person receiving the firearm or having the firearm transfer to liable for making sure that they, this is complied with, but we don't give them the ability to verify that this has truly been applied with. And lastly, Madam Speaker, is lines 395 and 396. This talks about the transfer of a weapon to an immediate family member. And what strikes me here, Madam Speaker, is I'm allowed to give a firearm as a bona fide gift to an immediate family member, my father, my mother, but I'm not allowed to receive any payment for such firearm, nor am I allowed to even so much as take a golf trip or a golf outing with my father as consideration for this. And if this body trusts someone to transfer a firearm to their father, why can't they receive compensation for the value of that firearm, Madam Speaker? So what I'd ask is, I know many people here support this legislation, and I know they mean well, but this bill is what it is. It's a bill full of contradicting statements and harmful unintended consequences, and for that reason, I'd ask that we don't engross this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Madam Speaker?
Delegate McQuinn.
I have a motion. I move the pending question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30 of the calendar, resolutions on the uncontested calendar. House Joint Resolution 21 designating August 26th, 2020, and in each succeeding year thereafter as Women's Equality Day. That day is the day that women were granted the vote by our Congress, and that is my reason for designating August 26th as Women's Equality Day forever on. Thank you. House Joint Resolution 42, Designating the Honor and Sacrifice Flag as the Commonwealth's Emblem for Honoring the Brave Men and Women Who Have Given Their Lives for Public Safety.
Delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Heretic.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HJ 42 would recognize the
Madam Speaker, I have a motion. I move the pending question.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30 of the calendar, Resolutions on the Uncontested Calendar. House Joint Resolution 21 Designating August 26th in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Women's Equality Day in Virginia.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Corey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HJ 21 designates August 26th, 2020, and in each succeeding year thereafter as Women's Equality Day. That day is the day that women were granted the vote by our Congress, and that is my reason for designating August 26th as Women's Equality Day forever on. Thank you.
House Joint Resolution 42 Designating the Honor and Sacrifice Flag as the Commonwealth's Emblem for Honoring the Brave Men and Women Who Have Given Their Lives for Public Safety.
Delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Heretic.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HJ 42 would recognize the Honor and Sacrifice Flag, which was created by Chesapeake resident George Lutz, as the Commonwealth's official emblem, recognizing and honoring those members of our law enforcement, firefighting, and EMS communities who have given their lives in the line of duty. And I would remind the body that we have such an incident just last week with the loss of Newport News Officer Catherine Thine, 24-years-old, who leaves behind her two-year-old daughter. This emblem would, under this resolution, be authorized to be displayed appropriately in state office buildings, local office buildings, and I hope it would be the will of the body to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
House Joint Resolution 50 Designating the Week of November 8th in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Radiologic Technology Week in Virginia.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Joint Resolution 50 does exactly what the clerk said it does. I hope it would pleasure the body to pass the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 72 Designating May 1 in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Oliver White Hill Senior Day in Virginia.
Delegate from Menneico, Delegate Bagby.
Madam Chair, this does exactly what the clerk says it does. It finally gives us an Oliver Hill Day here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I think all of us will agree that it's long overdue.
House Joint Resolution 88 Recognizing the Roanoke and New River Valleys as Virginia's Mental Health Region. Reported from Rules with Amendment.
Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Joint Resolution 88 recognizes all of the wonderful work that is happening in the Roanoke and New River Valleys as Virginia's Mental Health Region. I hope it be the will of the body to pass House Joint Resolution 88.
House Joint Resolution 90 Commemorating the 150th Anniversary of the Ratification of the 15th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Joint Resolution 90 commemorates the 150th anniversary of the ratification of the 15th Amendment to the United States Constitution. The 15th Amendment was passed in 1870 forbidding the denial of United States citizens' right to vote on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude, and providing constitutionality for the right to vote for African-American men. The resolution comes at the recommendation of Virginia's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Commission.
House Joint Resolution 104 Designating April 19 through 25 in 2020 and in each succeeding year as National Prosthetics Awareness Week in Virginia. Reported from Rules with Amendments.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I move the amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, National Prosthetics Awareness Week, which is a constituent service request from one of my constituents in Gainesville, provides an opportunity for dentists, educators, and government officials to stress the importance of good oral health and deliver a message of hope to people missing or damaged teeth. I move adoption of the resolution.
Page 33, House Joint Resolution 108 Designating 2020 as the Year of the Eye Exam in Virginia. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Robinson.
Madam Speaker, House Joint Resolution 108 is designates 2020 as the Year of the Eye Exam in Virginia, and I hope the body passes the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 111 Designating July in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Maternal Health Awareness Month in Virginia. Reported from Rules with Substitute.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Madam Speaker, I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Price.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. House Joint Resolution 111 would designate July as Maternal Health Awareness Month. Unfortunately, here in our Commonwealth, our maternal rate, mortality rate between 2015 and 2017 was between 31 to 46.9 deaths for every 100,000 live births. We are in a crisis, and, Madam Speaker, we would like to use all year, but specifically July, to raise awareness about the causes and what we can do to prevent these deaths. So I move that the bill, I mean, I move that the resolution shall pass.
House Joint Resolution 133 Designating October in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Postural Orthostatic Tachycardia Syndrome Awareness Month in Virginia.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keane.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'm glad the clerk pronounced that properly because I couldn't. I'd ask that we move this resolution because it does exactly what the clerk says.
House Joint Resolution 134 Designating October 9 in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Hangul Day in Virginia. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keane.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This would designate October 9th of each year, starting this year, as Hangul Day. If you want to know what Hangul is, I'd be happy to talk to you offline, and if you also want to make this happen, I'd ask that we move the adoption of this resolution.
Page 34, House Joint Resolution 140 Designating February in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Winter Honey Month in Virginia.
Delegate from Tazewell, Delegate Moorefield.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Joint Resolution 140 would designate February as Winter Honey Month in Virginia. I move adoption of the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 144 Recognizing the Contributions of James River Bateau Men. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Joint Resolution 144 recognizes the contributions of the James River Bateau Men. The James River Bateau, first used in the 1770s, was the primary means of transporting goods up and down the river between Richmond and Pointe West until 1840, when the James River and Canal was completed to Lynchburg. Crews of three men, often free or enslaved African-Americans, performed the difficult and sometimes dangerous work of pulling and steering the long, narrow boats. Largely unsupervised Bateau Men were entrusted with great responsibilities. They carried tobacco, grains, iron ore, coal, and other commodities to Richmond, helping to make the city a hub for industry and commerce. Because of their navigational knowledge and courageousness, Bateau headsmen were enlisted by Union forces during the Civil War to assist in maintaining Union Atlantic blockades and other wartime efforts. It is my hope that the committee, the commission, the House will pass the resolution to commemorate the courageous efforts of the James River Bateau Men.
Page 35, House Joint Resolution 145 Recognizing Navy Week on March 30th through April 5, 2020 in Tri-Cities. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Joint Resolution Number 145 will celebrate Navy Week in Tri-Cities, Virginia-Tennessee area. This is the Navy's primary outreach effort to areas that do not have a significant naval presence. They have 15 locations for Navy Week this year in the Bristol, Virginia-Tennessee area is one of them, so I move passage of the resolution.
Page 35 of the calendar, House Joint Resolution 148 has gone by for the day. Page 36, House Resolution 20 Designating March 28th in 2020 and in each succeeding year as James Solomon Russell Day in Virginia. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Sussex, Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House HR 20 is designating March 28th in 2020 and in each succeeding years as James Solomon Russell Day in Virginia. Basically, this is a tourism bill from the particular county of Brunswick County, recognized James Solomon Russell for his contribution, and he was the founder of St. Paul College in Lawrence Field, Virginia. Hope it's the will of the House to pass the resolution.
Shall the resolutions be agreed to?
Ayes 95, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Ayes 95, nays 0, abstentions 0. The resolutions are agreed to.
Resolutions on Regular Calendar. Page 36, House Joint Resolution 10 Designating June 1 in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Gun Violence Awareness Day in Virginia. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Corey.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. HJR 10 creates June 1 in 2020 and each succeeding year thereafter as Gun Violence Awareness Day in Virginia. On May 25, 2017, the House of Representatives and the Senate passed a resolution declaring June 1 Gun Violence Awareness Day nationally, and I would like Virginia to agree and emphasize that motion, so I ask you all to pass this resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 60, nays 30, abstentions 0.
Ayes 60, nays 30, abstentions 0. The resolution is agreed to.
Page 37, House Joint Resolution 85 Designating November 20th in 2020 and in each succeeding year as Transgender Day of Remembrance in Virginia. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Transgender Day of Remembrance raises much-needed awareness of hate crimes against the trans community and provides a day to mourn and honor victims by expressing love and respect for all people in the face of hatred. I move adoption of the resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 58, nays 23, abstentions 0.
Ayes 58, nays 23, abstentions 0. The resolution is agreed to.
House Joint Resolution 91 Affirming the Commonwealth's Commitment to Diversity and Safeguarding the Civil Rights and Dignity of All Virginians. Reported from Rules, and there is a floor amendment.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In recent years, there's been a sense of uncertainty and fear among many minority communities across the Commonwealth and the nation. Just over the past year, there have been increased numbers of incidents reported at mosques and synagogues in Virginia. According to the FBI's Uniform Crime Report, there were over 7,000 incidents and 8,800 victims of hate crimes in the United States in 2018. This resolution simply asks us to send a message that we depend on the contributions of all citizens, including new Americans, immigrants, who have made innumerable contributions to the social, cultural, and economic well-being of our society. We also want to assure that all vulnerable communities that they're supported. The inalienable rights and dignity of all American citizens, regardless of race, ethnicity, faith, beliefs, culture, gender, ability, sexual orientation, immigration status, disability, and gender identity, should be steadfastly affirmed and protected, and all acts of racial animus, intolerance, intimidation, and violence should be condemned. I hope, Madam Speaker, I hope it's the will of this body to pass the resolution and affirm that Virginia is and should be a safe and welcoming place for all.
Will the clerk report the floor amendment?
Floor amendment to House Joint Resolution 91 Offered by Delegate Gilbert. At the beginning of line 10, introduce Bill, strike lines 10 through 56. Second Amendment, line 58 introduced after Virginians, strike the remainder of line 58, all of lines 59 through 72, and through matter on line 73.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I move that the amendment be passed by.
Delegate Gilbert, would you like to speak to that?
Speaking to the motion? Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly agree with much of what Delegate Lopez said, and it looks like we're not going to have the opportunity to actually affirm the diversity and civil rights and dignity of all Virginians. We're going to continue to divide people into subgroups and not try to unify our Commonwealth, but continue to just focus on division. I think that's what this does in many respects, and so we and the Republican Caucus believe in affirming the following, that in the House of Delegates, Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby affirm the Commonwealth's commitment to diversity and safeguarding the civil rights and dignity of all Virginians. And we don't leave anybody out when we do that, Madam Speaker, and so that would be my amendment, that we just leave it at that, and that we all affirm the dignity of all people, and I don't know why we would want to pass that by, but apparently, that's the motion. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I would have wished that the minority leader would have alerted me to these amendments before, a second before I stood up. I find it truly fascinating that going down this road, affirming that the House delegates denounces the intimidation of the Commonwealth's residents and maintains our commitment to diversity, civil rights, and the dignity of all Virginians could somehow be something he doesn't agree with, and also sends the message that what we're trying to do here, send a message to every citizen of the Commonwealth, the House of Delegates denounces hate speech, hate crimes, harassment, racial bias, violence, and bias, anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, and anti-immigrant activity, harmful bias, and discrimination in all forms. And we're not dividing people by recognizing their inherent humanity and recognizing their heritage and recognizing where they come from. I am a Venezuelan, the son of a Venezuelan immigrant. Why is that not something we should accept in Virginia and embrace? The fact is that I hope that we would all think that diversity is our greatest strength. Our diversity, as I hope we all agree, is our greatest strength, not something that should be gutted out of a resolution. He took out all the warehouses, though. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I hope it's the will of this body to pass this resolution, which I believe in, I would hope is a no-brainer, or this amendment, or pass by this amendment, which is, I think, inappropriate and not in the best spirit of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Shall the floor amendment, my Delegate Gilbert, be passed by? All those in favor, say aye. Recorded vote. Shall the floor amendment be passed by on the board? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 57, nays 36, abstentions 0.
Ayes 57, nays 36, abstentions 0. The floor amendment is passed by. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 62, nays 21, abstentions 0.
Ayes 62, nays 21, abstentions 0. The resolution is agreed to.
Page 37, House Joint Resolution 136 Recognizing that global warming caused by human activity that increases emissions of greenhouse gases has resulted in a climate and ecological emergency. Reported from Rules.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would say to the clerk, explain exactly what this joint resolution does. I would just add that, as a mother, it is my job to fight for the future for my children, and that means clean air for them to breathe, clean water for them to drink, and clean soil for them to sow. It is time for all members in this chamber to accept what scientific community has come to accept as a fact. Man-made climate change is real, and we must do the right thing, and I hope that Virginia becomes the first state to do this, Madam Speaker, and I hope it's the pleasure of this body to pass this House Joint Resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 54, nays 36, abstentions 0.
Ayes 54, nays 36, abstentions 0. The resolution is agreed to.
Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Madam Speaker, I have one important announcement, which is a reminder for delegates that your statement of economic interest form is due Monday, February 3, and there is a late filing penalty of $250. I have several meeting announcements. Meeting announcements for Wednesday, January 29. Finance Committee meets immediately upon adjournment of the House, House Room 3. That's a change of location and time. Immediately upon adjournment of the House, House Room 3. Appropriations Committee meets 15 minutes after adjournment of the House in the shared committee room. That's a time change, 15 minutes after adjournment of the House. Courts of Justice Civil Subcommittee meets immediately upon adjournment of the Finance Committee in House Room 1. Courts of Justice Committee has been canceled. Courts of Justice Criminal Subcommittee meets 30 minutes after adjournment of Finance Committee in House Room 3. That's a time change, 30 minutes after adjournment of Finance Committee. Appropriations Subcommittee on Commerce, Agriculture, and Natural Resources meets at 3:00 PM in the shared committee room. Appropriations Elementary and Secondary Subcommittee meets at 4:00 PM in the shared committee room. committee room. Agriculture Chesapeake and Natural Resources Agriculture Subcommittee meets at 4:00 PM, Room 300B Subcommittee Room. Health Welfare and Institutions Health Professions Subcommittee meets 4:00 PM, 400C Subcommittee Room. This is an additional meeting at 4:00 PM. The Rare Disease Caucus has been canceled for today. Rules Study Subcommittee meets at 5:00 PM, Sixth Floor Speakers Conference Room. The Rural Caucus meets at 5:00 PM, Senate Subcommittee Room 2, Fifth Floor. Virginia Legislative Black Caucus meets 5:00 PM, 300B Subcommittee Room. Meetings Thursday, January 30th. Transportation, Transportation Systems Subcommittee meets 7:00 AM, House Room 3. Capitol Commission Bible Study, this is a change in time. Capitol Commission Bible Study meets 7:00 AM, Room 300B Subcommittee Room. Legislative Sportsman's Caucus meets 7:00 AM, 200B Subcommittee Room. New Americans Caucus meets 8:00 AM, 300B Subcommittee Room. County Cities and Towns Land Use Subcommittee meets 8:00 AM, 300A Subcommittee Room. Health Welfare and Institutions Committee meets 8:00 AM, House Committee Room. Health Welfare and Institutions Social Services Subcommittee meets 8:30 AM, House Committee Room. That's a change in time, 8:30 AM. Transportation Committee meets at 9:00 AM, House Room 3. Press Conference on Dignity for Incarcerated Women, 9:45 AM, House Briefing Room. Press Conference on Richmond Christian Medical and Dental Society, 10:30 AM, House Briefing Room. Democratic Caucus meets at 11:00 AM, House Room 1. Republican Caucus meets at 11:00 AM, House Room 2. That completes the meetings.
Delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Wilt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Rise for the purpose of the announcement.
Delegate Wilt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to make a brief correction, the Rural Caucus, thank you, will not meet this evening. Yeah, I'm sorry, but wait, there's hope. As Delegate Kilgore says, comedy's not easy. For the remainder of the session, Rural Caucus will meet on Thursdays at 5:00 PM. A new location as well, Madam Speaker. It will be in the Pocahontas Building on the third floor in Room 300B. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourn to reconvene Thursday, January 30th, 2020, at 12:00 noon.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that when the House adjourn today, it adjourn to reconvene Thursday, January 30th, 2020, at 12:00 o'clock noon. As many as favor the motion shall say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor that motion will say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Thursday, January 30th, 2020, at 12:00 o'clock noon.